Thank you. Now we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, I would like to propose that we amend tonight's agenda. We had a presentation planned, but our police chief is not with us tonight. And so I would like to remove presentations from the agenda. Otherwise, that's my motion to approve an amended agenda.
Second?
We have a second? Any discussion?
Second.
Oh, guys, another second?
A third.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any aye? Any opposed, say no? We have an agenda. Thank you. Consent agenda. We have some minutes that were emailed from the May meeting, I believe. And we have a resolution in opposition to offshore drilling, seismic testing and leasing, which is on page two of your packet. Which is something that we already submitted comments in the form of a letter to meet the deadline for June 16th for public comment. Of course, there's a long process that's involved with with this issue. And so there will be other opportunities to comment, but we do want to be proactive and adopt a resolution in opposition along with all of our fellow elected governments here in Dare and Currituck Counties. And then we have a resolution about ferry tolls, opposition to ferry tolls and the consent agenda. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda?
My only discussion is that I'm in favor of passing all three of these, particularly the opposition to offshore drilling. But, you know, we pass these resolutions and then I wonder where they go. And I'd like to make sure that these resolutions go somewhere. And I would suggest if everybody agrees that the resolution in opposition to offshore drilling be sent to Murphy, Tillis and Budd. And the opposition to ferry tolls be sent to at least Hanig and Goodwin. Just to let them know that we're, you know, we're in support of these resolutions.
Very good. Counsel, anybody have any objections to that suggestion? Staff, are you guys comfortable with that? Very good. All right. In that case, can I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. We have approved consent agenda. So now we're going to move on to staff reports. We have our first one is from our W town manager and planning director, Mr. Wes Haskett. Good evening, Wes. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Have a very brief report for y'all tonight, monthly report. With respect to permits, there were 49 permits issued in the month of June. Those consisted of four zoning permits, 19 building permits, 23 trade permits and three lot disturbance stormwater management permits. The total amount of fees that we collected, the planning and code enforcement department in the month of June was $9,371.94. And then lastly, the June plan with respect to the July planning board, the meeting is scheduled for July 21st at 5 o'clock. Any questions?
Are there any agenda items yet for the planning board meeting?
Not at this time.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Wes? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Now we'll hear from our fire chief, Chief Limbacher. Good to see you, sir, in this warm July weather.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Guess with the police chief not here and Wes being quick, this is a good day where I have kind of a lot. So I won't be taking killing everybody's time, but. So I owe you two months' reports. May I was not here for the June meeting, so the May meeting, just running through it, just one building fire, one trash fire, 54 EMS calls, one motor vehicle fire, or one motor vehicle accident, injuries, one without, one hazardous condition, one CO, one electrical problem, one heater defective, power line, power line down, one of those, one service call, five of our beach wheelchair delivery program, one of them for our address sign program, one for our smoke detector service program, one public service, 11 standby or move up calls and five dispatch canceled en route. So a lot of those are for mutual aid calls that they're calling us off as quick as they can so we don't take us out of the town if we don't need to. That's why you're getting those five versus, you know, maybe one or none for a month. So that is the June or the May report. Is there any questions on that? And the total was 88 for that month. So and that's about normal for that month, so. So moving on to June, which was kind of fell apart quick, but one passenger vehicle fire, one removed victim from stalled elevator, one surfer rescue, one heat short circuit from wiring, one public service, one assist the police, one good intent, one dispatched to the wrong location. That happened to be in Kitty Hawk and wasn't ours. One smoke scare, one CO, two motor vehicle accidents with injury, two without, two of our smoke detector service program, one special or two special event, six alarms, four of our beach wheelchair program, four dispatch canceled en route, five building fires, nine cover-ups and 41 EMS calls for 87. That's actually a little bit light, but I'll take it because it turned ugly quick, so. Is there any questions on the actual reports? I got a couple other things I wanted to discuss, like the through the happen through the month. Is there any questions just on the reports themselves or anything?
I don't have a question, but I just want to thank you. I had a there was a very serious fire just north of my house. And I have to tell you, it was a great feeling to see those fire trucks, that the house was a total loss. But it was a great feeling to see those fire trucks show up and see the first sprays of water come out. So thanks.
Oh, you're welcome. We're going to talk about that a little bit. I'm not going to try to be not too long-winded here, so I told the mayor if I start to get long-winded, say, hey, move it along. So I just wanted to start off by saying, before I get into my report about talking about the fires and all that kind of stuff that happened, the captain's interviews are scheduled for Tuesday the 15th from 8 to 5, and they're an hour interviews. So we'll see what we get there. I'm optimistic. So let's just see what happens. So I just wanted to start off by saying that, you know, the problem with public safety is it's so unpredictable. And this is, I'll just give you one day in a life, and this obviously doesn't happen all the time, right? There could be days where we have nothing. And then there's other days like this. So I'm just going to give you a rundown of the 18th, which was the day of the 150 Ocean Boulevard, the fire that Councilwoman Sherrill is talking about. So just give you a rundown how it started. Typically, I'm there at 7:00. At 10:37, we're on EMS call. 12:33, we're on EMS call. At 13:26, we're dispatched to a second alarm fire in Collington. There, we gave them two engines in our rehab team. Seven minutes later, we're dispatched to a structure fire in Corolla. Gave them an engine crew for them and still had the ladder in our station for us. Two hours later, at 15:44, quarter to 4:00, we're on a fire alarm on 9th Avenue. At 17:28, we're on a medical call in Foxwood. At 18:25, which is 6:30 just about, we're at 15 Ocean Boulevard for a fire alarm. And then at 18:36, we get dispatched to 150 Ocean Boulevard for the structure fire in our town. So just pulling up some pictures here, I'll just give you a quick reference. And again, I always preface this by saying, I'm not sensationalizing anybody's tragedy. I'm just presenting information because this is obviously people's worst day, so. This is at Collington. And the crews had a really nice stop here. Collington did a great job here, probably before the majority of the second alarm companies arrived. They had a good stop on it. And you can see when we get to the back picture here, these guys did a pretty phenomenal job, so. Still, obviously, a lot of damage to the house, but you're limiting it to your exposure. So again, the Collington guys and KDH was probably there fairly quickly, did a pretty good job, so. When we got there, it was mostly salvage and overhaul, and we backfilled their station for an hour while they cleaned up, so. Just a quick giving you the heads up on that. Hard for me to see here. Can you exhale that for me? There we go. So we could talk about 150 Ocean Boulevard, and there's a couple of things I want to talk about. There's there was obviously a lot of challenges. Probably one of the biggest ones in the summertime is the heat. It was nearly 90 degrees, 89.6 degrees to be exact with a 10 mile an hour wind. So obviously, those are challenges to us, just the heat alone for the firefighters dressed out. And then the wind at 10 miles an hours also can be a pretty big problem. So this is a comparison, and this has given you a timeframe. This picture. Can you blow that up a little bit? So this is, I think it's seven minutes apart? Eight minutes apart? That's eight minutes. Eight minutes. That's eight minutes. So you can see, you know, and the part of the challenge is here was, and this is no disrespect to anybody, everybody's doing what they should be doing here. But part of the problems on this are people are saying there's still somebody in there. So when the fire looks like it does on the left, it's not even that big when the police get there. Jay, my deputy chief, pulls up. It's not even, it's barely showing through the roof when they get there, maybe a minute or two earlier, okay? Sergeant Brinkley walks up. He says, hey, we think there might be somebody in there. He does what anybody would do, what I would do, any policeman would do. He walks up, opens the front door and yells, in there, of course, because the fire is not showing when he opens the door. Well, when he does that, he's on the windward side. So it's just like a blowtorch through it. And by the time he realizes if there is anybody in there, it's untenable for them, he cannot get the door shut. It's hard on his arm. So right there is what oxygen will do in eight minutes. So make sure if, you know, if you're sleeping in your bedroom or whatever, so you can see how quick it grows. And generally, fire doubles in about every 30 seconds today. The other thing that occurred, and this will be, I mean, this is actually the first one I've ever actually witnessed in person. I've seen it training for years. This was a huge thing back in the day when they were, when I was just a kid, they were teaching people. But this is what they call blevy. Does anybody know what a blevy is in here? It's basically, it's called a boiling liquid expanding vapor explosion. And it's a technical term for the contents inside a container expanding faster than the container can vent off. And at some point, a weak weakness is going to happen, it's going to explode. And that's exactly what happens here. And I can show you this. It's about a 10-second video a bystander gave this to me, so just I'm not narrating this, so just, you know, deal with me for a second here, but. So if you just watch it for a second.
It only took seconds. I'd say less than a minute for that thing to go up. You saw a smoke at the top, and then all of a sudden you heard a pop, and then everything went. There it goes again.
Now, obviously, that's not helpful. And extremely, extremely dangerous to the firefighters. Here's basically what exploded. It amounted to be a 250-pound propane tank. And then it just finds a weak spot and it explodes. Now luckily here, two things were very that saved us, were very good and didn't get anybody hurt on the fire ground, is the ICJ, which noticed it on his 360, had his command staff. And can you open that back up? I still have a couple more pictures. And the fact that partial collapse on that side, it occurred prior to the blevy. And what that did was the weight of the explosion, the weight of the house all collapsing in on it, kept it from expanding out. And it found an easy path of least resistance to go up, thank God, because had that went out, we had crews working on the Bravo and Delta, north and south sides of that building, protecting the exposures. Because at that point, that's what you're worried about mostly is the exposures. You're not, it kind of senseless to concentrate your efforts on that. You obviously want to put that out, but you don't want expanding past the original building, so. Like I said, that was the biggest those couple things are really what caused that expanded or very quick, rapid fire growth, so. I just had a couple more pictures here, and this kind of ties into what I would get to later in my little speech here, but this is Brinkley. Now, he appears to just be walking there, but that's because he's exhausted from helping all of our guys move that yellow line, which doesn't look like much till you're picking it up and it's full of water, so. Luckily for us, our police are always, oh, I did it again, always willing to help. And Brinkley is a fireman from way back, so he's old school, so he knows what's up, but. I just think, you know, it's good that we have that relationship with him, and I'll get into that in a minute. This is another picture of him. Yeah, he's moving some of it. So you can see, even for him, he's got, he don't have the gear on we have, but he's still working pretty hard, you know. It's funny because I listened to his body cam footage and he's huffing. So I use that later in my discussions with him, but anyway. So I just say this, you know, uncertainty is what makes this job really, really dangerous. And, you know, I know people see what they think is just people sitting around the firehouse. And I'm not saying that doesn't occur. But when this occurs is when the problems are. So, you know, I was having lunch with the town manager one time, way back when, you know, Cliff first started. And he actually asked me, he said, hey, what do you think, which profession thinks more dangerous, having done them both, police or fire? And then I said, police. And I still stand by that because it's the frequency and the volatility that the police are involved in to get that situation all the time. You know, it's the frequency in which they're in it. But that blevy is an example of what can happen here. You know, had they been there 10 minutes earlier when the smoke's just banked down and they popped that door and they got to go in there and see if there's anyone in there, that's when you really got to be nervous because it can flash. A lot of bad things can happen. You don't know how structurally, if it's sound, you can make your best determination by doing your 360 and your assessment, risk versus reward, right? But bad things do happen even when you do your best. Thank God, we didn't really, didn't experience that here. But it has happened on other fires, like on Goose Feather and Dogwood and things like that. So you do got to make those determinations, but. I'd say this, just one last thing while I'm talking about the relationship, and that was kind of my point in pulling this up is, you know, if we just take a minute to keep our thoughts and prayers in those guys that were killed out in Idaho, those guys were basically ambushed, those firefighters. They were brought in there and specifically hunted down like animals. I'm not, wasn't there, and you guys know me well enough to know that I don't critique and Monday night quarterback based on a media, you know, report, but I will say this, in my own hometown and here, 99%, 99.9% of the time, the police are either on scene prior to us getting there, or they're pulling up with us. And I think the guys with the guns even up the odds. And when you have that, maybe this wouldn't have occurred. I don't know if it would have. I just feel better with the guys with the guns with us. That way, we're all on the same page, so. We're very fortunate. I think the community is very fortunate that, you know, we have that relationship with our police. Not everybody has that. I've worked in communities that don't have it, and it doesn't work out good. So I think we're very, very lucky here, but. I know that's a lot, but any other questions?
Thank you, Chief. We are very grateful that you guys work so well together and especially in these very, very heated and I mean temperature-wise conditions. Yes, Rob?
Is it, according to code, can you actually have a, I heard that the fire was caused by a grill that may have been a grease fire on a deck?
You mean this fire here?
Yeah.
I don't think you're ever going to know. It wasn't outside. I can tell you that right now because I looked at the body cam footage and through the investigation, the fire was started inside. It was well-involved inside before anybody got called.
Okay. Is it permissible to have, let's say in a rental unit, a grill on a wooden deck?
I'm actually not sure about the code. Wes, Wes, do you know the code on that? I would tell you this, me personally would never have any type of grilling device on a wooden deck. Because just think, if you're, you know, I can think of my own house. My daughter's boyfriend cooks all the time. I'm not, I'm not the cook in the house. But when he's cooking, if the grill's dirty, it catches on fire two times this summer. As a matter of fact, we've had to get some baking soda and put it out. Well, if you panic and do something stupid, you're on a wooden grill, wooden deck, and that's, you know, it's just not a good idea. You have that on the, you know, out in the grass somewhere, you know. But I actually don't, I can't speak to the code. I actually don't know it. So, and I'm sure if it's not in your code, probably not. Yeah, Kevin would know. Okay. So.
Thank you, Chief.
I would just say one other thing for the fireworks. You know, every single year, and it happened this year to us, it happened last year to us, this year just luckily, one of the guys was out with the truck and noticed the fire. It was a garbage can out by the street, not under the house. But every single year, people do this. They set these fireworks off that they shouldn't be doing anyway, but they do them, and they put them in a garbage can. Those things are so unstable, they're probably not out. I mean, if you really have to do fireworks, I'm not a big fireworks guy. I don't think you should be doing that, especially down here with how dry it is and things like that. But if you have to do it, if that's like your thing, put that stuff in a bucket of water and put it like out near the street. So if it does happen to catch on fire, even though it's in water, it's at the street, and it's not going to hurt anything. But almost every year, almost every single year, there's a house fire from that.
Thanks. Appreciate that advice.
All right.
Thank you much.
Thanks, Chief. Now we'll hear from our town manager. Good evening, Cliff.
Good evening. Thank you. I was looking back and it was five years ago at your July meeting that the council determined that we're going to initiate a beach nourishment project. And here we are, five years later. That was the 22 project. We're here now talking about the 27 project. Ken Wilson will be at your August 5th meeting. He is going to present the preliminary findings of the survey that was done in June. And at that meeting, he'll present a contract for your consideration, same one from five years ago, which he can explain and answer any of the questions you may have. At your last meeting, you approved some pre-permitting consultation. That's occurred. You approved some soil, beach sediment sampling, so we could kind of get on a track to be able to better prepare for permitting this next project. The goal of the next project is to try and make it last six or seven years. But I think the point is that there's progress that's being made. We've signed a change order. We have $35,000 budgeted for this type use. And I signed a change order for Ken to keep, to keep going. But at the August meeting, you'll have that contract. You'll be able to determine whether or not you're going to move forward. But moving forward means you got to get the information to be in a better position to decide what if, you know, how a beach nourishment project might look for the Town of Southern Shores in 27. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention to be prepared for that at the August meeting. It's not a, it will, if you approve it, it'll be a decision to approve starting the process of permitting and designing the next project. Yes, sir.
Are the other municipalities going through the same process?
Yes, sir. I believe Duck, I don't know about, let's see, Duck has approved the proposal. Tonicity, Kitty Hawk and Kittleville Hills are expected to approve similar proposals this week. But I just wanted Ken to keep, keep working and I just didn't think now was the time after having just signed a contract to start the process to really get going yet. But this will keep us in line with those three towns. We're not, we're not going to miss a beat. Okay?
Thanks, sir. Attorney? You're up.
Thank you. I don't have any report from Mr. Hornwall.
Thanks, Lauren. Appreciate it. It's time for general public comment. Did someone sign up? It looks like they did, maybe. Thank you. Come on up, Debbie. Tell us your name and where you live. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Debbie Swick. I live at 59 Deer Path Lane. That's in Southern Shores. I just wanted to bring to your attention something that happened to me, and I do not hold Wes or Kevin in any way, shape or form responsible for this. But my neighbor complained about my fence being two inches over the six-foot limit. It was put up three years ago. And I have an issue with this neighbor in particular. It's been going on for four years, and it's just going to keep coming, whatever it is. The eight-foot by six panel, eight foot being the length, was two inches, an eighth of an inch, three quarters of an inch. We live on a sandbar. I'm assuming that the sand settles. I do know that I had raked up behind it. I'm not saying that my neighbor didn't remove some of the soil. But I do think that a two-inch deficit, there was one place that was four inches. I do apologize. I think it's ludicrous that I was addressed for something like this when there's fences that are well over two, three feet in the town. I did not do this maliciously. I followed the rules. But after three years' time of this fence sitting up and several inches, I had to go through the expense of purchasing a ton of bedrock, actually, and mulch to correct it. And as Chief knows, I had heat stroke that day and the ambulance had to come, et cetera. But I do wish that you would consider maybe putting some kind of a, you know, statute or agenda in there that says, you know, after so much time, a few inches is not something that needs to be corrected. It wasn't done maliciously on my part. It wasn't the whole eight-foot panel. And it was a three-year-old fence, so, you know, this was just a nasty neighbor being nasty. On another note, I am working with Ada Alvarez of the Civic Association to address the litter for next year's beach cleanup following and during 4th of July. It was atrocious. Those of us that sat at Chickahawke could witnessed about 1,000 to 1,200 people coming over the beach. The mess was horrific the next day, so we're hoping to work with the Town of Southern Shores as well to come up with some kind of a task force that will clean it up that evening and the day after. So I look forward to working with you on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Debbie. Anybody else who didn't sign up, if you would like to do a public comment? Okay, moving on. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. We have a public hearing. So I'm going to hand it over to our attorney, Lauren, and Counsel, this starts on page seven of your packet.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. As you know, the public hearing for a proposed text amendment is on your agenda tonight. This is a legislative decision. It's not quasi-judicial. You have been through many of these and are familiar with the process. Before we open the hearing and begin working through, I just want to make sure we have the applicant who is attending by Zoom. So Mr. Mina, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We just want to make sure you can hear us. Mr. Mina is attending by Zoom, and so when it comes to his time, he'll be presenting that way. In regards to the legislative proceeding, it is in your discretion to set rules of procedure. I believe that for the last public hearing I was here for, we did a 10-minute presentation limit for each individual staff and anyone else who wanted to give comment. Is there any desire by the Board to do that again this evening? You do have two public hearings, so it'd be appropriate to do them for both.
I'm moved to have a 10-minute limitation on comments during public hearing.
All right. Of course, you've had the agenda, and also Mr. Mina submitted additional documentation this morning, which was provided to you, and you've had an opportunity to review. So will, is there any, I guess there's a motion to the
So we have a motion for 10 minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no.
All right. Sounds good.
We have adopted that for our procedure.
So that 10-minute will not include questions from the Board. Each person will get 10 minutes, and then if there's questions from the Board, you can go from there. All right, so we'll go ahead and open public hearings in regards to ZTA 25-04 to consider a zoning text amendment application submitted by Anthony S. Mina to amend Town Code Section 36362B to establish a 90-day exemption for property owners in all zoning districts. to establish a 90-day exemption for property owners in all zoning districts to submit any applications to the town to seek governance under the Town Code prior to June 6, 2023. Now that hearing is open, we will turn over to staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Womble. Good evening again, Council. You all included in your packets was a copy of the application, ZTA-2504. You also received a copy of the agenda summary from staff as well as a staff report. And I'm going to read the staff report into the record. So this application is ZTA-2504. The applicant is Anthony S. Mina. And the requested action is Amendment of Town Code Section 36-362B. The applicant is proposing a ZTA to amend Town Code Section 36-362B to establish a 90-day exemption for property owners in all zoning districts to submit any applications to the town to seek governance under the Town Code prior to June 6, 2023. The proposed language would apply to property owners who own the property, were under contract to purchase the property, rented the property, or occupied the property on June 6, 2023. In July 2024, the applicant, Anthony S. Mina, submitted two applications to subdivide the property at 75 East Alwood Trail that were denied. In October 2024, the Town Planning Board considered a variance application submitted by the applicant to allow the subdivision of 75 East Alwood Trail that was denied. In January 2025, the applicant submitted another request to subdivide the property at 75 East Alwood Trail that was denied. In March 2025, the Planning Board considered an appeal application submitted by the applicant to allow the subdivision of 75 East Alwood Trail that was denied. In March 2025, the applicant submitted a ZTA to amend Town Code Section 36-414 to exempt himself and other affected property owners from having to comply with the lot width requirements established in ZTA 2303 that was adopted on June 6, 2023, which was denied by you all. The proposed amendment tonight to Section 36-362B is another attempt by the applicant to exempt himself and other affected property owners from having to comply with lot width requirements established in ZTA-2303 that was adopted on June 6, 2023. Town staff has determined that the proposed amendment is inconsistent with the town's currently adopted comprehensive land use plan. And town staff recommends disapproval of the application. Please note that prior to adopting or rejecting any zoning amendment, the Planning Board or Council shall adopt a statement describing whether its action is consistent with the adopted comprehensive land use plan and explaining why the Planning Board or Council considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest. That statement is not subject to judicial review. The ZTA does not identify any comprehensive land use plan policies that are consistent with the proposed amendment. The Town Planning Board unanimously, 5-0, recommended disapproval of this application, the proposed amendment, at their June 16, 2025 Planning Board meeting. And they found that their action, which was to recommend disapproval to you all, was consistent with the town's currently adopted comprehensive plan, that it was reasonable and in the public's interests. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Haskett this time?
Thank you.
All right. We're going to turn it over, turn to the applicant, Mr. Mina. Can you hear us?
Hello, yes.
All right. So, Mr. Mina, you have 10 minutes. The clerk is going to start that timer and we'll try to let you know when you're getting close to that end. And just a reminder of the rules of decorum that the Board has adopted, and please comply with those. So you can go ahead and the clerk...
There's a timeline?
Yes, 10 minutes.
I apologize. I have provided...
Yep, every Board...
...of Southern Shores, $75,000 misconduct requiring correction with Town Code 36-362B amendment that I would like on the screen as the television for the Southern Shores Town Council meeting. Will you do, please?
The, the, the Council has the documents you are referring to for their review. And the clerk will attempt to do her best to pull it up. But your time has started, so please proceed with your presentation.
Okay. I have those on savesouthernshores.com if you need another place to find those documents. My name is Anthony Mina. I'm a property owner in Southern Shores. I am not a friend, colleague, client, partner, student, or have any other relationship with any of Southern Shores employees, board members, or attorneys. I also am not working with any ops in the area, like, for example, like an M-op or black ops or sound front ops. I'm not working with anyone named Matt Matter. I just wanted to... We're aware of all those things when, because I'm going to get to the...
All right, Mr. Mina, we're having a hard time hearing you. Mr. Mina, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're having a hard time hearing you. So I'm not sure, are you on the phone or are you walking around? If you could just maybe talk directly into the phones, we would want to make sure that the Board can hear you. So give us a test.
I would be able to start over. Start the time, I'll start it.
Still, we still cannot hear you.
Would you like to restart the time and I will start over?
Yes. I'll be, we'll be happy to make sure we adjust your time for the, the technology issue. But we want to make sure we can hear you. So can you, can you talk directly into the phone?
Yes, I am talking directly into the phone. Can you hear me now?
Okay, yes. I think that's better. All right, go. Aren't we, we adjusted the time, so go ahead.
All right. I am just changing locations. Okay. I apologize. I was saying that my name is Anthony Mina. I am a property owner at Southern Shores. I am not a friend, colleague, client, partner, student, or have any other type of relationship with any Southern Shores employees, board members, or their attorneys. I also am not working with any ops in the area, like an M-op or an op associated with the number four, or black ops, or sound front ops. I'm not working with anyone named Matt or in any type of matter. What I'm doing here is trying to get Southern Shores to correct wrongdoing that was caused by Wes Haskett hiding his zoning amendment he proposed from my family when you're purchasing our property and cost us to pay $75,000 more than we would have paid if Wes Haskett was not hiding the zoning amendment from us. Now, I provided a timeline of Southern Shores, $75,000 misconduct requiring correction with Town Code 36-362B amendment, which I believe is on the screen in this room right now. Possibly, because I can't tell from my computer. Wes Haskett filed a lot width amendment on March 31st, 2023. The lot width amendment was subject to Town Code 36-360, where the Planning Board acts as the Board of Adjustment and notices are required pursuant to Section 36-362 by mail and that property posted notice. This is all stated in Section 36-365, which says the Board shall hear and decide all matters which apply, which it is required to pass under any statute or ordinance that regulates land use. The Board of Adjustments heard Wes Haskett's zoning amendment on May 15th, 2023 and passed the matter to Town Council, which Town Council also passed and adopted. So Wes Haskett was asked on May 1st, 2023, following question by email, "Could you please tell me anything that would prevent me from subdividing the 75 East Alwood Trail lot so I could build another house? I do not own the property but have a maiden offer on the property." This is Exhibit 4 of my application. Wes Haskett responded to four emails during the month of May 2023 without disclosing the material fact that a lot width amendment was filed on March 31st, 2023. Whether it's a duty to speak, fraud can be practiced by silence as well as positive, by a positive misrepresentation. So what Wes Haskett was doing during the month of May is called fraud in the state of North Carolina and is not permitted in Southern Shores Town's government under, in their code of ethics. Town Code, Wes Haskett did not notify property owners of the May 15th, 2023 sharing of regulated land use with a lot width amendment filed to prevent lot subdivisions and lied about the May 15th, 2023 hearing, which you will find in Exhibit A and Exhibit F, where Wes Haskett claimed that there was not a hearing on May 15th, 2023 on the lot width amendment, when there clearly was. Watch YouTube videos of the meeting or get the Town Minutes. So Wes Haskett's caught in another lie there. Another reason Wes Haskett should not be working for the town of Southern Shores.
Mr. Mina, please keep your comments to the, to the zoning text amendment. You have about five minutes to go.
The previous owner of 75 East Alwood Trail, Wes Haskett previously communicated with about the 75 East Alwood Trail lot of division, negotiated additional $75,000 for my family as Wes Haskett was hiding the proposed lot width amendment. And the only reason my lot width, my subdivision application is denied is because of what Wes Haskett was hiding. Wes, Wes Haskett refused to answer questions about how property owners were notified of the March 20, the March 31st, 2023 lot width amendment when June 12th, 2023, and emailed a response that stated, "At this point, you should direct your questions to our Town Attorney, Vol. Hornfall", and included Mayor Maury in his response. So the mayor has also been aware of this problem since June 12th, 2023, indicating that notification requirements were not complied with for the June 6, 2023 lot width amendment. Wes Haskett and Town Council were served with the Deere County Superior Court order requiring the complete record of the variance hearing record within 30 days of December 18th, 2023, but refused to comply. Federal crime laws prohibit tampering with a witness, victim, or an informant at U.S. Code Subsections 15, 12, C1 and 2, which states whoever corruptly alters, destroys, mutilates, or conceals a record document or other objects or attempts to do so with the intent to impair the object's integrity or availability for use in official proceedings or otherwise obstructs, influences, or impedes any official proceeding or attempts to do so shall be fined under this title or imprisoned not more than 20 years or both. On the savesouthernshores.com website, you will find that the Southern Shores Town Council was served with the order requiring the records from the October 21st, 2024 variance hearing to be provided to Deere County Superior Court and have refused to comply, like Wes Haskett has also refused to comply. In addition to Section 36-362B not being complied with notification records, not being complied with the notification requirements, Town Code 36-414B also requires posted notice to be posted at property subject to a zoning amendment prior to the amendment being made, which did not occur at 75 East Alwood Trail. I have a public records request, which is, was included with the timeline of Southern Shores, $75,000 misconduct requiring correction with Town Code 36-362B, which proves that Southern Shores does not have meanings in their zoning code for the words "all", which means all property receives, or all matters which it is required to pass under law or statute that regulate land use need to be heard by the Board of Adjustments under Chapter, or Section 36-360, requiring notice to be mailed and posted. And Southern Shores does not have meanings giving the words "and" where in Town Code 36-414B, the meaning "if". So there is not one single hole in my case...
Mr. Mina, you have one minute. You have one minute, so you might want to wrap it up.
All right. There is not one single hole in my fraud case against Wes Haskett where he can claim that these words have meanings not found in dictionaries available to the public and not, and taught in Deere County schools. Southern Shores zoning code is written using the English language and you are not permitted to use Southern Shores zoning code and claim there's meanings with definitions not found in the English language. If you have any questions about where a hole possibly could be, please ask me. Because the way I see things is you're in violation of federal law by not providing the Deere County Superior Court my records from the variance hearing, which were ordered from Southern Shores.
All right, that's your time, Mr. Mina.
Wes Haskett is in violation of fraud.
Mr. Mina, that's your time.
Yes, I'm finishing.
That's your time.
Thank you. I'm finishing.
All right. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Mina?
No.
No.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mina. All right. Having, did anyone sign up? Okay. I don't believe anyone, has anyone in the public signed up to provide additional comment? Is there anyone here tonight who wanted to provide comment on this, for this public hearing? All right. There's no one else here and no one else who has signed up. So at this time, we will close the public hearing and turn it over to the Council for deliberation. And just remember the comments of staff to adopt that consistency statement with whatever action you take tonight.
Thank you, Lauren. Council, does anyone have any discussion points they would like to start with?
No, but I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. I move that we deny ZTA 25-4 and affirm that the action of denying this proposed ZTA is consistent with the town's currently adopted comprehensive land use plan. It's reasonable and in the public's best interest.
Council, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone want to discuss any further, the motion as presented? Seeing no interest, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, please say no. Motion carries. The ZTA is denied.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving on to our next item on our agenda is a second public hearing. So I'm going to hand it back over to our attorney, Lauren.
Thank you.
And this is on page 34, Council, sorry, of your packet.
Correct. So thank you, Council. Again, this is legislative. You know, the procedure, you've already addressed procedures for tonight's public hearings earlier. So we'll be limiting to 10 minutes for anyone who wants to give comment and presentation. If the Board is ready to proceed, we can go ahead and open the public hearing for the LGC resolution to consider the town's issuance of a debt obligation and the amount of approximately 4.9 million pursuant to installment financing contracts for the purpose of financing Southern Shores Fire Department building located at 15 South Alwood Trail, Southern Shores. So with that, the hearing is open and I will turn it over to staff. So with that, the hearing is open, and I will turn it over to staff.
So the previous contract the town operated under for fire protection services required the town to pay the debt service if a fire station was ever built. Of course, that occurred, and the town paid the debt service beginning in 2019 directly to Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., who in turn paid that debt to the bank. Since that organization no longer exists, the contract also says that the town will take over all the assets of the fire department, including the fire station. Now, the North Carolina Local Government Commission requires the town, whenever we carry debt over $1 million, we have to submit an application for their approval. Part of that application is that the public has an opportunity to weigh in at a public hearing. The debt service will stay the same, the same payment we've been paying. The interest rate stays the same. The only difference is the loan is now in our name. And so you've got this resolution before you that authorizes the town manager to sign the documents associated with the loan after attorney review. And after that, we will also need, if you approve, we'll need a motion to approve the minutes of this hearing immediately after. And the reason for that is we need to make the August 5 application deadline, and you won't meet until that night. And so we need the minutes to be part of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Counsel, any questions for staff?
No questions.
No questions.
Did anyone sign up? Is there anyone here to give comment on this public hearing and this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Okay. There's no one signed up and no one interested in giving any comment on this. So with that, we can close the public hearing and turn it back over to the Council for deliberation and votes.
Thanks, Lauren. Appreciate it. So just to note, the interest rate is 3.15%, which almost anyone in the room would be happy about if they were getting a loan for especially $4.8 million. So this has actually turned out to be a really good process, because we get to just assume the loan that was established many years ago when the interest rates were quite significantly lower. So we need to make a resolution, excuse me, make a motion to adopt, I'll go ahead and do it, adopt resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval of a financing agreement authorized by the North Carolina General Statutes, and authorize our town manager to provide any support for this process that is needed. Does that do it?
That will do it.
Okay. Is there a second to my attempted emotion?
A second motion.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion?
And our loan payment remains the same.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We have an approved resolution.
Now you'll need to adopt, approve the minutes.
Right. So we want... Can you do that?
And it would be appropriate, I think, that if you're going to approve the minutes, that you approve the minutes as amended, so the minutes in your packet did not have the council members who made the motions. And so if your motion is to approve the minutes with the council members who made the motions added to, the clerk will make those amendments, and then those will be approved.
I would amend the minutes to...